Do we have any final actions to report?
No final action, do not matter, Mayor.
Okay, in which case we will adjourn the special meeting and convene the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, October 22nd. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Councilmember Kozlowski.
Here.
Aquino.
Here.
Gaylord.
Here.
Howell.
Here.
And Sheldon is absent.
And if you will join me on the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any agenda update?
Madam Mayor, there are minor revisions to the staff report and the ordinance in item 8B. A codified revision has been provided to you and they are also available to the public on the table in the back.
Okay. And with that, we move to business from the floor. If there's anybody that would like to speak to us about anything that's not on the agenda, you could fill out a blue card and deliver it to the officer standing near the table where the blue cards live. That'd be great.
Good evening. My name is Marilyn Jasper, speaking on behalf of Public Interest Coalition and the Humane Society of the Sierra Woodhills. If anyone followed California's just-ended legislative session, they may have noticed the large number of bills signed into law that deal with animal suffering, cruelty, and/or abuse. In all the years that I have followed animal legislation, this year set the record. A number of people who testified in the hearings cited the link between animal cruelty or abuse and human violence. Others mentioned devastating traumatic events that animal cruelty and abuse can have on children even if they're just a witness. As the public becomes more informed of animal atrocities, growing demand is created for laws to end them. Horse racing is finally being exposed. Greed, gambling, overworked horses, drugging, sending them to slaughter, and deaths on the tracks, and even more in training that are not reported. Similarly, rodeo is finally being exposed. Some areas ban rodeos altogether. Some ban events such as calf roping and steer wrestling. Others ban implements of torment that must be inflicted to get animals to "act wild", flank straps, spurs, electric prods, or other means of torture. Usually cruelty is not visible in circuses because that abuse takes place in pain-inducing barbaric training sessions where no one is watching. Now, as law just passed, Senate Bill 313 rightly bans animals in circuses. Just today, the House of Representatives passed the PACT Act that also cracks down on animal cruelty. As rodeo animal abuse is exposed, either where no one is watching, practice sessions on private property, or at public events, it's inevitable. Laws are going to be passed to end it. So, we urge Folsom City Council to get ahead of the curve. If you cannot or won't ban rodeos in Folsom, then in the contract, which presume is going to be coming to you fairly soon, we'd ask that you prohibit all implements of torture, the things I mentioned, that are used to elicit a fear, a fight-or-flight reaction, shamefully for rodeo entertainment. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no other requests to speak. So with that, we will move to our scheduled presentation, item 6A, presentation of Community
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Christine Brainard, Communications Director with the City of Folsom, and I'm pleased to share with you the results from the 2019 Community Service Day, which was held on Saturday, September 21st. This year, we had 3,000 volunteers complete over 80 projects and contribute over 12,000 volunteer hours. More than $100,000 was raised in in-kind and in-support sponsorships. Volunteers of all ages, abilities, and interests were able to serve their community that day. The morning began with the kickoff at Lakeside Church, and that included a check-in, a community breakfast, and welcoming remarks before volunteers went to their diverse projects throughout the city. A sampling of the projects includes Lego sorting that was organized by local nonprofit Brick Dreams. More than 60 Lego sorting volunteers helped produce over 840 cans of Legos, which will be provided to local law enforcement agencies, and they give them to children who are facing a time of crisis. An invasive water weed known as the water hyacinth was removed from 300 feet in the Willow Creek and filling massive dumpsters along the street. And as you can see here, it was just no easy task. Volunteers assembled more than 800 military care packages that have been shipped overseas to our military troops. And as you can see in the photos on the right, they've already been received by our troops. More than 55,000 pounds of food was collected to serve the Twin Lakes Food Bank for more than seven months of the upcoming year. And perhaps one of the most impactful projects was the Neighbors Helping Seniors projects. Thirty-four local seniors were able to receive assistance from volunteers. The value of the donated materials was over $5,000. Three hundred man-hours supported this local seniors with an estimated manpower value of $4,500. Volunteers of all ages were able to help clean books over at the Folsom Public Library. And landscaping projects took place throughout the city, from schools to parks to the zoo sanctuary. Thousands of pounds of trash were collected from parks, trails, and lakes. And all throughout Folsom, you could see volunteers that day wearing their green and pink shirts, serving their community. And year after year, we continue to see that spirit of service and community here in Folsom that day. So I'm really excited to show you our 2019 Community Service Day video.
Our community is nothing without the people in it. Our community is nothing without the people in it.
This is what makes Folsom Folsom.
Our community is nothing without the people in it.
This is what makes Folsom Folsom.
There's three thousand people today that are volunteering to serve one another in our community.
Today, we're out helping a senior who really wants to live independently. We're taking down two sheds that were really a hazard, and also a century plant, which was large and overgrown. It really makes a big difference for them, just being able to get around their entire yard.
The kind of work that's going on here, we couldn't do in a year, we couldn't do in 10 years. But when the whole community comes together on one day, it can make such a significant change. It's unbelievable.
I'm here at the Folsom High School. Around 100 people are working to beautify the school. Living in the community, it's our jobs to make it better. There's a Haitian saying that say, with many hands, you can get the work done faster. And plus, I love helping. That makes me smile.
Today, we're helping out at the Old Forge in the Old Town.
We were cleaning out the barn, all of us, as a family. It was good fun. We got very, very mucky.
If one person can help the person who's next door, then, and that person helps the person who's next door to them, you know, pretty soon, everyone's taken care of. And I think that's what it's about.
To learn more and get involved, go to folsomcommunitieservice.org. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
I want to thank Christine and all of the city staff and all of the people that helped to get this event back to fruition again, especially the people who were willing to wear the pink shirts, because I chose the color. Because the people that were in the pink shirts are the organizing committee, and that organizing committee has been meeting for, is it about 10 months? And that was a couple of meetings a month. A huge amount of effort went into getting everything organized, and everybody in the city needs to be proud of all of the work that was put out that day and all of the projects that were completed. It's just, it's a great, great event, and I've been told, because we've been doing it for so many years now, and every year there's those T-shirts, that that's actually something where you're in the grocery store, out and about somewhere, if somebody that also owns one of those T-shirts will probably walk up and say, "Oh, what project did you work on?" So I think it has a reverberating effect all throughout the entire year. So if you're owners of those T-shirts, wear them, and you'll probably make a new friend. So I'm looking forward to moving forward and doing it again next year. Do we know the date yet?
September 19th, 2020.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. And with that, we will move on to the consent calendar. Do you have anybody that would like to pull anything off consent?
Do, please. I'd like to pull C and D.
C and D. Do you have a motion for?
I'll move to approve A, B, E, and F.
Okay, we have a motion. A second call the roll, please.
Councilmember Kozlowski.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes.
Sarah, you're up.
There he is. Okay, Mark, so just a couple questions, Mark, on the stop, always stop at Arbuckle and Castleman. Just a couple questions. I did drive by there today after we emailed, and I do see some "No Access to Lumbee Park" signs, no outlet, all of it. But it sounds like that's not doing the job and deterring cars from going down there.
Correct.
Okay. And I'm curious as to why Sergeant Beatty was the no vote for adding the stop signs.
I did reach out to Sergeant Beatty and heard back from him earlier today. He had indicated to me that he favored more of a phased approach of perhaps relocating that sign again and trying to measure some effectiveness there. He didn't feel that the stop signs at this intersection were going to deter this cut-through behavior. And so, since the committee was voting to do everything all at once with the stop sign and relocating the sign instead of a phased approach, he opted to vote no.
Certainly, I want to be responsive to the desires of the residents, but I'm also trying to balance the idea that, you know, that we're setting a policy that we want to apply fairly and consistently citywide. And, you know, it's clear in the staff report that it says that, you know, you don't think this is going to make any sort of dent in terms of the traffic volume. Are you thinking that it is going to reduce the speed there? Because I guess I'm just thinking, you know, what about the next neighborhood that comes? I mean, I can't speak for my colleagues, but, you know, not a week goes by that some resident does not email me and say, "I want a stop sign, stoplight, roundabout, or speed bumps in my neighborhood." I mean, that is the number-one complaint, at least for me, is speeding. And so what I'm wondering is, you know, if we say, okay, yeah, we're going to go ahead and put the stop sign, even though we're not really sure it's going to do what they're hoping it will do, what does that mean when the next neighborhood comes? I mean, as long as they get the signatures and everybody's on board, then we just put a stop sign wherever anybody wants one? That's what I'm struggling with.
Understood. It's a great question. Stop signs in residential areas, we give a great deal of latitude because we, at this time, do not have a lot of other traffic calming solutions to offer to our residents. We do signing, obviously, and striping in a lot of cases, and if those don't work, we don't have a lot of, you know, next-tier kind of solutions. Stop signs traditionally are not very effective at speed control, and we always counsel neighbors, you know, don't expect a lot from this. It might help a little. It isn't going to be a sea change in the behavior of the motorists, and you're going to get some negative consequences in the form of the braking and acceleration noises all hours of the day, and potentially a little bit of exhaust fumes where there were none before. So we counsel them that this is all we have, other than the signs and the striping, to offer you. Don't expect a lot, and if they do opt to do it and submit a petition to the Traffic Safety Committee, it will receive consideration.
Does it ever happen where you take a stop sign out years after you put one in, people say, "Yeah, this is not what we thought"?
Very rarely. And I can't think of a residential circumstance where that's been done. We've had a few major streets where we have, over time, kind of grown out of stop sign control and either opted to remove the stop sign or replace it with a traffic signal.
So, you know, I'm not going to fall on my sword for this. If nobody else has any objections, you know, I'm willing to support this. I just, I do think, and, you know, we need to do something to slow the traffic down citywide, in my opinion. I don't know what the answer is to that, but I just, I am, I just want to be cautious that, you know, that this is, you know, anybody who wants a stop sign is going to get a stop sign, whether it's going to have the desired effect or not. But unless anybody has any questions.
I actually do have one other question. In conjunction with the proposal to put in the stop sign, are the "No Access to Lumbee Park" signs going to be, what is the point there? Are they going to be removed? Are they going to be relocated on the same post as the stop sign?
We're going to move the existing sign just prior to this intersection, and I think we're also going to put one back all the way out at Riley Street. That was the original location that we had the sign, was like right when you turn off a Riley. And the residents, it said, "Oh, it's too far away. People aren't understanding that this road doesn't lead to Lumbee."
Is there a problem with putting them in both locations?
That's what I'm saying we're going to do.
Because I would tend to agree. You know, people aren't paying, I had to drive to El Dorado Hills this morning. There's signs all over East Nataoma that there's street work in progress, and there was a lane closed. And people were doing 60 miles an hour right up to those cones. So, you know, people are, they're not paying attention to something that, you know, could potentially be a problem right in front of them, let alone looking at an informational sign about something that happens two right turns away.
I think Roger had a question.
Yeah, I would just, I mean, I appreciate Vice Mayor Aquino's comments. I do, I agree that we need to slow traffic down in Folsom. At what point are we looking at other mitigations to add to our toolbox besides just stop signs? I mean, like you and I spoke about undulations and speed bumps and how the city might be testing those. I think for this specific area, I think the stop sign is needed. So I would agree with the vote that was given, but in your point, when are we going to look at other?
It's actually this winter. Based on our recent discussions about the current city policy on speed bumps, we are going to revisit our traffic calming guidelines, which are, I believe, they're now 15 years old. So it is certainly a good opportunity to revisit those policies, incorporate any new state-of-the-practice features that are being implemented in other agencies. So we will reconsider not only things like speed bumps, but perhaps we can also establish a more defined policy for residential stop signs.
Okay.
Okay. So with that, I'll go ahead and move adoption of resolution number 10346.
A second. We have a motion and a second call the roll, please.
Councilmember Kozlowski.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes.
And Sarah, you're up.
Okay, Mark, it's me again. So, this is the speed limits. My question is, if I'm understanding this correctly, based on what you're recommending, if I'm traveling down East Bidwell and I'm starting at Sutter Middle School and I'm heading toward Highway 50, I'm going to go through a 35 mile-per-hour zone, then a 40 mile-per-hour zone, and then a 45 mile-per-hour zone. And you must be a lot more optimistic than I am about the attentiveness of drivers. I just don't see anybody paying any attention to those changes, and I'm just wondering, you know, can't we just set it at a, just a uniform 40 miles per hour? Just average those things out?
Actually, no, we can't, based on the findings of the engineering and traffic surveys that the consultant performed. The Central Business District, so everything from, on East Bidwell, from Riley to Blue Ravine, came in at a very consistent 35 mile per hour, which fits the character of that, you know, it's a narrower stretch of East Bidwell.
Mark, I'm sorry to interrupt, but just for the benefit of the people that are watching this on TV, online, or sitting here in the room, what Mark is referring to is, speed surveys are done that measure the speeds typically over a 24-hour time period, and I'm not saying I agree with this, but historically, transportation engineering and traffic engineering says that 85% of the people will drive a safe speed. I'm going to just put out there that I disagree that 85% of the people are going to drive a safe speed, but state law requires that we sign, that we put in speed limits that are in accordance with that 85th percentile number. So that's what Mark is talking about, the travel speeds at certain sections along East Bidwell.
Right.
Which is the same situation that we have along Nataoma Street, because it's 35 miles an hour until you get up to the prison road, and then it, or just pass there, then it goes to 45.
Right. And so what we're trying to find is the most optimal, uniform traffic flow on a given stretcher road. And certainly, I think everyone recognizes that traffic flows differently on East Bidwell through the Central Business District than it does as you're going down past the college. And so, you know, the 35 mile per hour through the Central Business District makes a lot of sense and is supported by the data. And so is the 45 mile per hour that we're recommending we maintain on the southern section. So the only part is the one in the middle that you're referring to, the very short stretch of 40 mile per hour from Blue Ravine to Woodsmoke. So basically, just through, from Blue Ravine, Creekside, Woodsmoke, and then the road widens out at that point and clearly becomes a higher-speed stretch of road. The 40 mile per hour, if you look at it in the other direction, when you're coming from Highway 50, we see it as a good transition from 45, getting people down to 40 miles per hour, which seems to be what they're driving based on the survey, and then getting them used to going slower so that they enter the Central Business District slower. If I look back at the survey...
And I think the other important thing to point out is, it has to do with the frequency of the driveways, which means people exiting the roadway and entering the roadway, there's probably a driveway every 150 feet from Blue Ravine all the way down to the middle school, where that's not the case if you're going south toward the freeway.
Right, yeah, because you're going past, you know, the shopping center on the one side, and then the senior care facility on the other, and then you're hitting, you know, some undeveloped area on the railroad track. Looking back at the survey itself, for that particular stretch, the 85th percentile landed right on 45 miles per hour. So my recommendation, based on the findings in the survey, is you could either justify going down to 40 miles per hour, or you could leave it at 45. And both would be valid and enforceable.
Do we have any other questions, Mark?
Can you repeat that? You said those are the two actions you could take from, based upon the data.
Based upon the data, I could make two recommendations to you. Since the 85th is right on 45, we can just leave it right there and recommend the adoption of a 45 mile-per-hour speed limit, which is what it's posted today.
So right now, it's going from 35 to 45?
Right now? You're talking about the change, the recommended change in the speed limit?
No. What is it as we, if I were driving down the street, what is it? It's 35 miles an hour from the middle school to Blue Ravine?
That's correct. Well, yes.
And then it goes from 35 at the light at Blue Ravine? It's 45 then, from there all the way to the freeway?
That's correct, although I did note, there's no sign, 45 mile-per-hour speed limit sign posted in the southerly direction, or, you know, the Highway 50-bound direction, but there was one posted between Woodsmoke and Creekside in the northbound direction.
And given the volume of traffic, again, because that's close to my house, given the volume of traffic that I see between Blue Ravine and Woodsmoke, and given traffic going in and out of Creekside, that shopping center where Pete's coffee is, I personally would prefer to see it as 40.
All right. That's why I asked you to say that. I think that would, I agree with that. A 40 would be a nice, smooth buffer from 35 into 40 and give it a gradual speed increase, but still keep it, you know, somewhat slower. Try to slow people down somewhere, huh? The other thing I was going to say on this is, I just wanted to give you guys credit for all the work you're doing. Last time, we talked about some of these things with the 85th percentile and all that stuff. I mentioned the signage and the visibility of folks crossing in the crosswalks and all the stuff you guys are taking into consideration and doing, so I appreciate it. It's, we're seeing it everywhere, so, thanks, sir. It's great.
And I'll ditto that, but I just want everybody to understand, this is nothing new. This is what the public works and the folks in our traffic engineering group do all the time, every year, just like they always have.
What's new about it is the coloring you're using. There's a lot of changes you're doing differently. So Blue Ravine next to Economy, there's some green, there's some bright colors. It is new. So it's very dynamic and very visually appealing, and you can actually see what's going on, so I think it's great. Anyway, I would propose that we put it at 40. I don't know if anyone...
So I think you're, are you making a motion to support the staff report?
Correct.
We have a second?
Second. Just one point of clarification. The item, the recommendation for the 40 mile per hour speed limit, that's item 8A. That's, because that's a change from the existing speed limit. The ones we're addressing with this consent item are the maintaining of the speed limits of 35 mile per hour from Coloma to Blue Ravine, 45 miles an hour from Woodsmoke to Highway 50. And then we can address the other two through the public hearing.
Okay, so that gap is actually in A, 8A?
Correct.
Okay. So we have motion, a second call the roll, please.
Councilmember Kozlowski.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes.
Okay, so now we're moving on to item 8A. Ordinance 1295, uncodified ordinance adopting prima facie speed limits on East Bidwell. Introduction, first reading.
And you get me again. I will keep this very brief, especially since we just covered a great deal of the Okay, so clearly, we're in the midst of a citywide speed limit update. The last time we did a comprehensive update of our speed limits was in 2009, 2010. The state law requires that we update speed limits periodically, and really, 10 years is kind of the maximum before the traffic courts won't consider the surveys valid anymore and will not allow radar enforcement of speed limits. So here we are again. We started this process back in March. You'll recall that you approved maintaining the speed limits on Blue Ravine Road and on Iron Point Road back on March 26. This evening, we just went ahead and approved the speed limits on Folsom Boulevard and on those two sections of East Bidwell Street. The item before you, right now, this public hearing, are for two short segments of East Bidwell Street, one from Riley to Coloma, where we discovered that we had never adopted a speed limit before. And so the survey was conducted, and we would be establishing a 35 mile per hour zone on that short section of East Bidwell, and then the other section from Blue Ravine to Woodsmoke, which we just discussed, where we are recommending a 40 mile per hour zone.
Mark, on Riley, excuse me, from, on East Bidwell, from Riley to Coloma, is there any portion of that that is posted or signed or signaled? Mark, on Riley, excuse me, from, on East Bidwell, from Riley to Coloma, is there any portion of that that is posted or signed or signaled so that it's 25 miles an hour when children are present?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. I think it is, because I think we've had...
Because it should be in front of the school.
Absolutely. We used to have that mid-block crosswalk there, so I'm fairly certain that we have a school zone, 25 mile per hour when children present out there.
Okay, could you take a look at that and see, because I would think that that should go up maybe to the end of that, or at least halfway up from where Eldorado Savings Bank is?
Yeah, I think we can do it up to...
Because of those other crosswalks there?
Yeah, we can do it up to 500 to 600 feet away from the edge of the campus.
I'm guessing that's about what that is.
Yeah, I'll definitely look into that. These, the surveys here that you see on blue are going to be considered by the Traffic Safety Committee later this week, and then whatever the recommendations from the committee at that time will bring them forward to you, probably in, I don't know if we'll make the November meeting, but so it'll probably be in December. And then there are several other minor arterial and collector streets, like Golf Links Drive, Lynn Drive, that we'll bring to you after the holidays. And then the streets south of Highway 50, which are currently in the, under construction, some of them are being widened, and Green Valley Road, which is currently under construction and widening, we're deferring those for the time being. Once the work is done on those streets, we'll go out and do a survey and come back to you with recommended speed limits.
Yeah, I agree with that entirely. I don't want to see those surveys until the work is done.
And that's all I have for you. If you have any questions about the two sections of East Bidwell Street, happy to answer them. And I do have copies of the radar surveys if you would like to see any of the data.
Any questions?
A separate question outside of this, but with regards to the stop sign analytics you put in, or stoplight analytics you put in Empire Ranch. Is that something that's a software that you could deploy on all these streets as well, if they have the newer intersection setup?
Yes. What we're, we're in the process of updating all of our traffic signal controller citywide. We're probably about 20 to 25% through the process. Those new controllers give us a lot more flexibility for manipulating the flow of traffic. We're also incorporating the video detection, which is really what gives us the opportunity to detect the traffic at a certain distance and adjust it however we see fit to affect the traffic flow, instead of putting the loops in the pavement and then having to go cut new loops at a different location, you know, to try and change the speed. What we're doing out there on Empire Ranch Road is simply what we call a rest in red scenario, instead of, you know, defaulting back to green on the main line and allowing people to just flow through, we have it resting in red unless you're approaching at or below the speed limit, in which case the light will turn green before you get there. If you're going too fast, you'll get there before the light turns green and you'll have to pump your brakes. We can certainly, this has been very successful, I think, on Empire Ranch Road. The data seems to indicate we've really curbed the speeding out there, so we could certainly roll that out on different arterials.
I'd love to see that.
Okay, and again, that's something that you guys have been working on for a very long time, as technology has changed, staff is keeping up with that. And I did, I don't know that I let you know, but I did actually get a phone call last week from a woman who lives somewhere off East Natoma, and wanted to thank both the Public Works folks and Police Department for the increased enforcement. She believed that her observation was that it had reduced speeds along Empire Ranch Road.
Sure.
Thank you.
So do we have a motion?
I will move ordinance 12...
Madam Mayor, this is a public hearing, Adam.
Okay, and we have no request to speak. Is there anybody that would like to talk to us about this? Seeing no one running down to the podium?
I'll move that we approve ordinance number 1295 as presented.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second, call the roll, please.
Technically, we're introducing?
Yes.
Okay. So on the motion to introduce, Councilmember Kozlowski?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes.
Hello, good evening, Mayor Howell, fellow council members. My name is Daniel Wolfe. I'm an engineer in community development. I'm here to present to you the ordinance mending the flood damage prevention ordinance in the city of Folsom Municipal Code. So just to give you a little background on this, the city, we had a community assistance visit with State Department of Water Resources to review our implementation of the current flood damage prevention ordinance. They were also there on behalf of FEMA, and the purpose of the meeting was to verify that the city is meeting the minimum requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program so that we can continue to have flood insurance for our businesses and our residents. During the meeting, we discussed past and current issues involving the special flood hazard area, which is also known as the 100-year floodplain. As the city builds out north of 50, we find ourselves with the development encroaching closer and closer to the special flood hazard area. So we take our ordinance very seriously in making sure that we're keeping businesses and residents above the 100-year floodplain. So during our meeting, we just, I'm sorry, other than the city being commended for implementation of the current ordinance, the Department of Water Resources recommended that we revise language associated with the various types of notification on the state and federal level. This wasn't in response to any procedural issues that we have. We just, they wanted to make sure that our ordinance was consisted with the state model floodplain management ordinance, simply put. So the number of things that we have to, that we talked about, or we're updating the ordinance are making sure that letters of map revision go to FEMA, that we notify adjacent communities when they're impacted by any analysis or development near a floodway. Yeah, and that's essentially it. Here to answer, any questions?
Yeah, my question would be, how often is FEMA updating the floodplain maps?
Well, I think I could have, Dave, you didn't talk about that with more detail, but we are currently, have a couple of programs moving forward to actually analyze specific portions of the floodway and get better data on them, so we can revise the base flood elevations in those areas, so we can have a more accurate map on where the flood would be in a 100-year storm event.
Yeah, so to answer your question, we've been undertaking the revision for the flood maps since, I believe, 2015. It's been a long process. We're in the home stretch right now. It's in for review to FEMA and FEMA's plan checkers. We've been going back and forth with some of their technical intricacies that they have with our modeling and that sort of thing. So we'll probably be having open houses, releasing the draft maps in early spring. That's our timeline right now. And that's for all the creeks in Folsom.
Okay, and is that information also being updated in accordance with whatever the more recent storm data has been? Because, you know, as many of us know that pay attention to such things, that that 100-year storm is not, is far more frequent than it used to be.
Yeah, it's the intensities that are, have definitely increased. I'm not sure what the model is they're running. I know it's, it's at least up to 2016, and we've had major events since then, but historically, those are outliers. And, you know, FEMA will probably just say, yes, you're going through a series of these more intense storms, but, you know, we can only do what they tell us to do, because that's the requirements.
Well, I know, but it's kind of, it's almost similar situation to the operation of the dam.
Yes.
When there's better technology available to have better analysis of the data, you know, don't wait 50 years before you actually start using the new data.
And on that very point, some of our modeling was incorporating new and improved LiDAR data and modeling techniques, and they didn't want to approve those. They wanted to go back to the way they did them. So we had to actually unwind some of our analysis and redo that.
Okay, well, that's something that we maybe should talk about offline, because it's information that perhaps we talk to our federal representatives about. That's one of the ways that we got the Bureau to take a better look at what they were doing in terms of predicting weather relative to lake levels. Any other questions?
Just a follow-up question to your comment. Are you suggesting that we independently update what 100-year flood is?
No, what I'm talking about is that we have data, and, you know, and what, the question I was asking, Dave, is how old is the data, the last time FEMA looked at it? And if we, if we know that we're getting higher rain intensities more frequently, that actually changes what the definition of 100-year flood is.
I understand completely.
And they're, and they're not wanting to update the mechanisms by which they get that data. That was what I was talking about.
So you're just critiquing their decision? You're not suggesting that we independently create our own idea of 100-year storm?
No, no, I'm suggesting that that is something that we talk to our federal representatives about, getting FEMA to use the technology that is currently available.
Gotcha, thank you.
I'll move to introduce ordinance number 1296. It's a public hearing.
Second?
Oh, sorry. It's a public hearing, sorry.
So we will open the public hearing. Guess there's not a lot of engineers who want to talk about this from now until hell freezes over, Dave. We need more geeks at the council meetings. So we have introduction, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Kozlowski?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes. And that moves us to item 9A, new business. Resolution 10350, resolution of City Council ratifying the city manager's authorization for emergency repair to the landslide behind the Folsom Zoo Sanctuary, and award of contract to Westcon Construction Corporation, determining that project is exempt from CEQA and appropriation of funds for emergency repairs.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I am Brad Nelson. I'm the senior park planner for the city, and what I have before you tonight is the emergency repair to the landslide behind the Folsom Zoo Sanctuary. Just as a way of sort of orienting yourself, so City Hall is down here on the bottom, the Brodeo Arena is here, the Johnny Cash Trail is along here, and this is the Robbers Ravine Bridge over here, the recently finished Zoo Barnyard Experience is right here, and the location of the landslide is right basically between, it's just outside the fence of the Barnyard Experience and the, in between that and the Robbers Ravine Bridge. In the winter of 2018, 2019, there was a severe landslide back here, and the Parks and Recreation staff has been meeting with the Public Works Department and the Environmental and Water Resources Department, and we've determined that this is an emergency situation that needs to be taken care of prior to the upcoming rainy season. We did take some aerial images out there to give you a better feel and some close-up pictures of where it is. So this is, this is the barn up here, this is the location of the landslide itself, the sewer access road is along here, and this curving road, or walkway up here, is the ADA path up to the Barnyard Experience. Between 2016 and 2018, there was three fairly large construction projects, which were all occurring in this area, the first of which was in 2016, was the upgrade of the sewer line, which is along the, this access road here. And that sewer line starts up at the restroom building, at the entrance to the zoo, and Fisher's Bistro snack shack there, and then feeds through all the zoo, the animal exhibits, and it continues along the road here. That was put in place prior to the construction of the barn, so that there wouldn't be any disruption with that. The barn sewer facilities also drain into that sewer line. Parks and Recreation staff, in conjunction with the Public Works Department and the Environmental Water Resources Department, determined that this is an emergency situation. If it's not repaired prior to the upcoming rainy season, we could have a fairly catastrophic failure down there, one of them being the potential failure of the sewer line through there, which would mean we'd have a sewer spill into the regulated wetlands below and/or losing part of the assets of the roadways there. This is another aerial view. This is the Robbers Ravine Bridge here. This is the location of the sewer. So you can see how it's flatter over here, and then it gets fairly steep here. This is looking arially down. This is the access road here. The permanent fence for the zoo is here, there's a vehicular gate there, and then the permanent fence is along here. We had to go in and install a temporary fence so that nobody would access this area here. Environmental Water Resources placed a generator on the other side of there, and you can see there's a lie-flat hose here, should there be some sort of an emergency situation until we get this repaired. And this is the slide here itself. Again, you can see how it's a little bit flatter on both sides, and then the fairly severe slope in here. This is from the ground looking up. This is pretty telling photo right here. The road is up here, and you can see daylight through where that fence is and where the road is. So this is fairly, pretty much a vertical drop-off there. We had talked to multiple engineering firms, we talked to Young Doll, who's a geotechnical engineer, McCann-Somps, who are civil engineers, we talked to Holders and Cool, now NV5, they're geotechnical engineers, and we also talked to Westcon Construction. Westcon Construction just recently finished the, they actually did the Johnny Cash Trail, they did the Robbers Ravine Bridge, and more recently, they finished the Oak Parkway undercrossing under East Natoma Boulevard. So we're familiar with all of these firms. Young Doll and McKay and Somps formed a team, and they provided us a design bid-build, sort of a traditional approach proposal. The costing with that was $66,500 for the survey, $309,000 for the, and that was our internal engineer's estimate for the construction, $28,500 for additional design work, engineering and testing, that was not included in Young Doll's proposal, and that makes for a total project construction cost of $404,000. This approach is a little, it takes a little bit longer to do it, because you have to prepare the design, then you have to go out to bid, and then you have the actual construction. So we, that would put the construction timeline in January, February of next year, which to us is a little bit too far out. The other proposal we received was from Westcon and H&amp;K, NV5, and they provided a design-build proposal. So design-build approach is, it's preferred when there's funding issues, timing, and/or site constraints, all of which we kind of have in this project. Westcon committed to a 35 working day project completion period. They also gave us a guaranteed maximum price of $341,672. We are, so that's the total project cost. Due to the nature of this being an emergency project and potential unknowns, we are including a contingency of $85,000. That would be for city-directed additions, changes, or modifications, which are outside of Westcon's scope.
So it gets us to a little bit more than the previous number, except it gets done faster.
It gets us right below the previous number. It's less.
If you include the $85,000, wasn't it 404?
It's, so 404 plus the $28,000?
Okay.
Or $23,750. So that would be 42.7, and we're at...
Basically, the same number.
Yeah, it's very, very, very close. The Westcon... The Westcon number is, is slightly lower, and it's, the timeframe is, is more to our liking. So funding sources for this, we are getting about 70% or $241,672 from general fund. We have $100,000, which is about 30% from the wastewater operating fund, and that was based on what we felt was a proportionate share for the replacement of the sewer line should it need to be, if you just had that as a standalone project. And then the $85,000 contingency, which again is for work outside of the scope of Westcon's project, that would also be from the general fund. So the, this is all through the Folsom Municipal Code, which is the emergency procurement procedure, which allows the city manager to make emergency procurements when there's exist a threat to the public health, which would be the potential sewer line failure, the welfare of the zoo animals, eliminating or not having that access road. If there was an emergency, we'd have a much longer time accessing the animals in the zoo sanctuary, and then basic safety to workers and to the public that are up on the roads and the trails around the zoo. So the recommendation, the Parks and Recreation Department recommends that the city council pass and adopt Resolution Number 10350, a resolution of the city council ratifying the city manager's authorization for emergency repair to the landslide behind the Folsom Zoo Sanctuary, and award of contract to Westcon Construction Corporation determining the project is exempt from CEQA and appropriation of funds for emergency repairs.
So I have a question for you.
Okay.
I have no problem with doing this design-build. I like the faster timeline. I frankly wish we were already under construction with this.
Right.
Is somebody from NV5 going to stamp those drawings?
They are, and they're also going to be on-site daily or every other day to monitor the drilling and all the construction work.
Okay, and I already talked to Lorraine about this briefly, and I guess you guys have already told them that you don't want that to be a wooden retaining wall, and I agree entirely because you'll be lucky to get 20 years out of it. The only request that I would make is get NV5 to do some soil testing, at least a couple of samples, so that they can determine the nature of that soil with regard to corrosion and, because that may lead to the application of a coating on the backside of the steel lagging.
Okay, okay. They did, if you see in that picture, so this was, they were, this is actually a gentleman from Holders and Cool NV5, so they were doing some preliminary investigation. This dark soil here is the Copper Hills volcanic soil.
Right.
So that's what they're hoping, or they, they hoping, they feel fairly confident that that exists all along this slope. That's what they encountered when they were digging up the abutments for the Robbers Ravine Bridge.
What I'm actually, that's probably what contributed to the slide in the first place, but what I'm talking about is there's a suite of corrosion tests that they should be doing, and it will dictate what coatings, if any, should be put on the soil side of the back of that wall.
Two quick things. In situations like this where time has been determined to be of the essence, do we normally, as a matter of course, include liquidated damages in this type of contract? And are there any in this one?
We, if I may answer that question, Councilmember Koslowski, Madam Mayor, we always do.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. And to the city manager, thank you for bringing this to us, even though you could have taken action.
Yeah, as I explained to, thank you, Councilmember Koslowski, this is actually under my authority in an emergency situation to just do the work, but given the scope and the cost of this one, we want to make sure we had all of our details really nailed down and make sure you're aware of the, of the hit to the general fund because it is significant but important.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I think you have a speaker.
Pardon?
Do you have a comment card?
Do I have what?
A comment card.
No, I do not.
Okay, then I will move to adopt Resolution Number 10350.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Koslowski.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
And Hal.
Yes. With that, we will move to new business, and that is an update for workshops related to the tree preservation ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Amy Nunez. I am the city arborist here in Folsom. I work in the community development department, and I'd like to thank you for allowing me this opportunity to present to you this informational workshop on where we stand with this effort in updating the tree preservation ordinance. So as you might recall, Pam Johns, the community development director, gave an introductory presentation to you back in April, just laying out the background of this effort. To reiterate, our current ordinance for tree protection is 25 years old now. The intent and purpose behind that ordinance was adopted with fantastic intent. It is because of this ordinance that we can actually boast 13 years as a designated Tree City USA, which is something that we are very proud of here in Folsom. But in the last couple of decades, there have been some gaps and ambiguities and challenges that both users and staff have come across with implementation and enforcement of the ordinance. Just to give you an idea of our project timeline, as I mentioned, Pam Johns gave that introductory kickoff presentation back in April. Shortly thereafter, we conducted stakeholder interviews and hosted a community workshop to garner initial comments and feedback from users and community members as far as challenges that they have encountered with the current ordinance and changes that they would like to see. Taking their comments and then some comparative analyses that we had our consultants conduct, we have amassed that information and put it forward in a draft for public review, which was released last week. The public review period is going to be 30 days, and we are very much looking forward to receiving comments and feedback on this draft. We have poured a lot of man-hours into combing through this ordinance, but as I'm sure you all know, checking your own work can sometimes be dangerous. We don't expect we got it 100% right this first time. And so at the end of the day, we want to make sure that we are receiving the feedback that we are asking for from the community, because this is not my ordinance, this isn't the community development department's ordinance, this is the City of Folsom's tree ordinance. And so we want to make sure that the document that we publish is representative of our community. After November 15th, when that public review period closes, we will take the comments we have received, review those comments, make appropriate changes, and hopefully have a document to present to you for action in December. So a quick summary of the changes that we are proposing, the staff report packets that you have received have a little bit more detail than this, but these are the key changes that we feel are important to highlight tonight. Those changes involve some updated definitions, examining and clarifying regulated activity, and introducing findings for tree permits, the introduction of a tree protection and mitigation plan when work needs to be done in the tree protection zone of protected trees, looking into some proposed modifications to our mitigation table, and then also some clarifications and modifications of the tree planting and replacement fund. So these are a couple definitions that we are hoping to expand upon, the first one being what a protected tree is. Our current ordinance protects native oak trees, landmark trees, and street trees. We are proposing to incorporate parking lot shading trees, and then also trees that are required as a condition of approval to be protected. What we've been finding is trees that are required as part of the zoning code, AKA parking lot shading trees, that are planted to provide shade over a certain timeframe, are getting topped and removed and not replaced. So by incorporating them as a protected tree, we can help better ensure that we are shading our parking lots and help to battle the urban heat island effect, which was touched upon in the 2035 general plan update. Additionally, we have amended the definition of a tree protection zone to incorporate and consider the diameter of a tree in addition to its strip line, and this was to help better protect those trees that have a more pyramidal-shaped canopy versus a vase-shaped canopy. Now, one of the biggest changes we are proposing in this ordinance update, and a change that we are hoping to garner some feedback on, is our proposed expansion of the definition of a heritage tree. The existing ordinance defines a heritage tree as a native oak with a diameter of 19 inches or greater. There is no other mention of heritage tree in the ordinance, and because a native oak tree is already protected at six inches, the definition of heritage tree as it currently stands holds no functionality. During our community outreach, we did receive some voiced feedback for a desire to protect more than just native oak trees, and also to protect those monument large trees in historic Folsom. So our proposal, taking those comments into consideration, is to expand the definition of heritage tree to incorporate all trees over 30 inches in diameter, with the exception of some invasive species. The second key change is the clarification of regulated activity and the introduction of required findings in order to get a tree permit. Our current ordinance doesn't offer a whole lot of guidance when it comes to what qualifies a tree for removal, and this has caused some confusion amongst users and staff alike. So this updated ordinance proposes the incorporation of findings that an applicant would have to meet in order to get their tree permit. Additionally, the ordinance update would outline regulated activity, whereas the current ordinance is a little nebulous on that matter. The third key change that we are proposing is the incorporation of internationally recognized standards when it comes to work around trees and the implementation or requirement for a tree protection and mitigation plan. Now, the tree protection and mitigation plan is not exactly a new concept. Our current ordinance does call for a tree preservation plan. However, the current ordinance basically says to stay out of the tree protection zone and offers very little guidance when development has to actually encroach into the tree protection zone of protected trees, and that's often a scenario that we deal with. So the tree protection and mitigation plan would incorporate best management practices in accordance with industry standards, and then also often require the involvement of a project arborist to monitor trees during development to ensure that those trees survive and remain healthy throughout the duration of that project and in longevity. One of the larger changes that we are also proposing in this update is to amend how we tabulate our mitigation fees. Our current ordinance has a somewhat unique categorical system when it comes to tabulating our mitigation fees, and during our comparative analyses, we discovered that our required replacement planting numbers are actually substantially higher compared to our neighbors in the region. Additionally, our current ordinance has language that allows for somewhat of a loophole if a builder wants to place their house or their building over existing trees. Right now, our ordinance allows for mitigation of $100 per tree or a single 15-gallon replacement tree if you place your building over a mature protected tree, regardless of the size of that tree. So in our updated ordinance, we are proposing to align ourselves more with our neighbors in the region and base mitigation rates directly with the size and number of trees being removed on the site to be more fair. For example, with our current categorical system, someone who wants to remove 10 6-inch trees has the same mitigation requirement as someone who wants to remove 10 10-inch trees, even though there's a 40-inch difference in those removals. So going to an inch replacement for inch-removed ratio would be a more fair mitigation requirement. Additionally, rather than the $100 or single-tree replacement for trees removed that fall within the building footprint, we are proposing instead a mitigation reduction of 50% for residential properties, and also the introduction of a tree preservation credit system. So this tree credit approach is a new concept that city staff is still fleshing out. This is another item that we are hoping to, to receive some feedback on from the community. So this slide here shows two scenarios. For someone wanting to build a house on a lot, the idea behind the tree preservation credits is to encourage strategic designs to allow for tree preservation. In scenario A, we're trying to debate whether only trees within the buildable envelope should qualify for those preservation credits, or in a situation like scenario B, if all trees on a site being developed should count towards those credits. In scenario A, the applicant is going to have a much more robust tree protection and mitigation plan just because of the nature of building near trees, whereas in scenario B, that applicant wouldn't have nearly as many requirements for preserving those trees. And I'm talking about a project arborist, probably monitoring, making sure that root severance is happening in accordance with industry standards, and other robust practices to, to reduce those construction impacts. For key change number five, I'm going to let Pam Johns, my director, chime in.
Just briefly, I want to remind the city council that in 1995, when the tree preservation ordinance was adopted, it was done in advance of any mitigation fee resolution, and so the tree preservation ordinance includes language in the ordinance about that fund and subsequent resolution that was anticipated. It was also clarified in 2006 with an amendment, and what we're proposing to do in this current update is to, once again, clarify how those funds would be spent. And when we come back to you in, hopefully, December, we would also be bringing forward a recommendation that you consider an amendment to the actual fee. So while Amy talked moments ago about the change to the way we're calculating the fee, we also know that the cost per inch of replacement that we charge now, which is $94, doesn't cover the mitigation cost, which we know regionally to be closer to $325. So we're going to bring information back to you at a subsequent date to give you more information about that and provide a recommendation about whether that's something that, that we should be increasing. In the meantime, I want to point out that the minor changes that we made are in response to things like a general plan that clarifies that we will be preparing an urban forestry plan, and so that fund now anticipates the preparation and implementation of an urban forestry plan. It identifies that the community development department is responsible for the management of that fund, and is a little more transparent for the range of things it could be used for. So rather than construction of a bike trail, it would be for the planting of trees along a bike trail, and it's that, it's that simple. So I'll turn it back over to Amy.
So now I just wanted to point out a few common scenarios that have acted as the inspiration for a lot of these proposed updates. So this scenario is unfortunately something that I get to deal with on a somewhat common basis. This is a tree on a development lot. As you can see, the tree protection fencing is down, and the tree protection zone itself is woefully small. Soil compaction has happened from vehicular access, and this tree we anticipate is not going to thrive in the next decade. And this tree, we anticipate, is not going to thrive in the next decade. Our current ordinance has very limited guidance on how to reconcile the need for construction in accordance with the allowances of the zoning code with trees on sites. The proposed update acknowledges this reality and incorporates those standards I spoke of earlier. And with the implementation of a tree protection and mitigation plan, there would have been a project arborist on the site and certificates of compliance that would need to have been submitted to the city at various points throughout the project from that arborist attesting that the tree protection plan was being executed. Scenario two, this touches more on that tree protection and mitigation plan. Another function of this proposed tree protection and mitigation plan would be during the entitlement process for development applications. Right now, the city arborist and tree considerations often come later into development processes, long after lot lines have been agreed upon and approved. In the proposed update, a tree protection and mitigation plan would be a required part of the entitlement application, where trees would be mapped out and designated for preservation or removal for development. And the model that we had for this concept was the La Colina del Lago subdivision. This developer actually took the existing trees on their site into consideration when laying out their lot lines. And as a result, a tree plan was put together. Trees were designated as to be preserved in perpetuity, and others were chosen strategically for removal based on their condition and the need for development. And what this did was promote more thoughtful site design by requiring trees to be considered earlier on in the process. Additionally, a bonus feature to this product is residents who purchase these lots have certainty on what trees they can remove for their development and what needs to be preserved. And this would help expedite the tree permit process when they get ready to build. This is another scenario that happens more often than we would like. This is an actual submittal from an applicant who wanted to build a house on a lot with trees. His initial proposal showed the house critically impacting a grove of six trees. The initial mitigation for this proposal was either 122 replacement trees or about $9,000. But with that loophole that I spoke of earlier, the $100 mitigation fee for trees that fall within the footprint of a house, this applicant resubmitted plans and rather than moving the house back to save the trees, actually moved the house forward. And this doesn't show very well. These were the as-built. But this person actually moved the house forward to be able to remove the trees for a cheaper cost rather than spend more money to move the house back and work around the With this proposed update and the incorporation of needing to meet findings, city staff would have some support to tell the applicant that they needed to move the house back to preserve those trees. Additionally, rather than only having to pay $100 in mitigation for the trees being removed, they would get a 50% reduction, but they would also get tree preservation credits to help further encourage moving that house back and preserving those trees. And rather than what ended up happening, which was a house on a lot devoid of trees, in this scenario, we could potentially end up with a house on a lot with mature trees, trees planted on the lot, and a situation where tree preservation is encouraged over tree removal. In scenario four, another item that we are proposing to implement in this update is a concept called reasonable alternative measures, which would act more like a minor deviation that could be reviewed at staff level. And in this scenario, an applicant wants to build a pool, but their proposal critically impacts a tree. In the current ordinance, this resident would have to choose between getting their pool or preserving their tree. However, with this concept of reasonable alternative measures, which would align with the zoning code update once we get to that point, the city may allow some minor deviations in the setbacks of the property to allow that pool to encroach slightly and possibly save that tree. So in that scenario, the applicant would be able to get their pool and their tree. And then this final scenario, scenario five, touching back on that parking lot shading tree issue that I touched on earlier. This was a picture taken in Folsom on a commercial property. And this tree has been topped. And this is definitely not something we like to see. It's a very poor arboricultural practice. It significantly reduces the life expectancy of trees and actually increases the likelihood of branch failure later on in that tree's life. Our current ordinance is actually silent on parking lot shading trees. And methods in order to ensure that these trees reach their full potential and provide the shade for which they were planted have to be derived from indirect language and other parts of the code. So in this updated ordinance, we are proposing, again, to include parking lot shading trees as protected trees. So they would be subject to the provisions of other protected trees. As far as removals and pruning, we could ensure trees get replaced when they need to be removed. And we would have shaded parking lots battling that urban heat island effect and being conducive to the character of the city of Folsom. So as I mentioned before, we are in the public review draft period. It closes November 15th. The community can send their comments in writing via email. And after that period is closed, we will take those comments into consideration, do our homework, make revisions, and again, have hopefully a document to present before you in December. And that concludes my presentation.
Do you have any questions of staff? Okay, Sarah?
Thank you, Amy. Very thorough presentation. Honestly, this is going to take me a while to digest. I guess what I'm trying to figure out is striking a balance between preserving trees, which I think everybody wants to do, and respecting private property rights. And I think kind of my general philosophy as far as government is kind of the same as parenting, which is have as few rules as possible, but enforce them absolutely. And as I read through a lot of this stuff, especially like when you're talking about protected trees, you know, within 12 and a half feet of a street. So that's a residential tree, right, in a lot of cases? So I mean, I read through this stuff, and I think, how would somebody know if you pruned it without a tree permit? How would they know if you replaced your sidewalk or your walkway and you impeded on the whatever that circumference thing is you're talking about? I mean, it just seems like, how do you know? How would somebody? How do you know? How do you enforce it? I don't know. It just seems...
Well, to your first point about striking that balance, that's been a constant conversation that we've been having internally. So as I mentioned, this first draft is our attempt at reconciling the comments that we've received and coming up with a solution to those concerns. This public review process is everyone's opportunity to weigh in. And if we need to scale back, we will certainly do so. To your second point, as far as how someone knows, that is something that we can do a better job of. We do have information on our website. We are hopefully going to be able to elicit the resources of the Sacramento Tree Foundation to create materials for education and outreach to communities as far as the value of trees and actually putting trees back into under-canopy neighborhoods. And that would be another opportunity to relay those regulations. But as far as the street tree comment that you made, that is actually a carryover from the original ordinance.
Yeah, I realize that. But I guess in terms of when I'm talking about how will people know, I'm talking about kind of your department. You've got this whole list of prohibited activities. How do you know that somebody's done something that's prohibited in the ordinance? And then how do you enforce it?
There is a whole code enforcement division. Oftentimes complaints come in, and in those instances, it's often complaint-based. Usually, we become aware of certain situations when someone is applying for a building permit of some sorts, and we're able to capture it that way and then educate applicants ahead of time to head off any damage that could happen to trees and make sure that they're aware of any sort of provisions that they need to abide by in order to protect their tree.
I think just my experience, because the tree ordinance, I think, was passed, I think it actually went through the planning commission when I was on the planning commission before I came to the council. You would be surprised at how often people will turn in their neighbors. If you live in a neighborhood that was constructed with street trees, everybody has one. And if somebody goes in and takes their street tree out without putting something else in, one of those neighbors is going to be upset about that. And chances are, they're going to call in. And so that's one of the things that happens. And frankly, that may be happening a little bit more often now than it used to because of all the people that are trying to reduce the amount of irrigation they have to use for landscaping, particularly in the front of their house. I know there's at least three houses on Flower that have done that in my neighborhood. So those are some of the things that happen. And I think that to carry that further, because of changes in state law about how landscaping has to be done in order to conserve water, there's a lot of pressure not to install or to plant those traditional street trees that most of the older subdivisions have. And when you have somebody that, that was an egregious example, I think, of moving a custom-built house further to make sure they eliminate all of the trees. But if we can get to a point where people are paying a little bit more attention, I don't think, you know, or the situation that happened at Petco and Sprouts. They went in and topped all those trees. That's going to kill all those trees. And the property owner's comment was, well, you know, our tenant's signs weren't visible enough. I don't know. Do people make emergency last-minute spur-of-the-moment trips to Sprouts? I wouldn't think so. But, you know, so that's a really bad excuse for why they thought that it was okay to top those trees. And I, for one, would really like to ensure that landowners can't do that. And if they do, you know, that tree topping was called in by someone that is a personal friend of both you and I, probably within hours of when it happened. But I'd like to see that landowner, because of a change in the ordinance, be held responsible that you can't do that. And if you do do it, you're going to be replacing those trees. You know, we approved the project with that landscape plan. There's supposed to be, you know, 30, 35 trees, whatever the number is in that parking lot. They go in and top them all, the trees all die, and then there's none.
Yeah, and as I mentioned, we did deal with that using indirect language from other parts of the code. So being able to point to the tree preservation ordinance and have those trees protected would have given staff a little bit more support in order to make action happen more quickly when that happened.
Yeah. So, you know, again, I think I'm convinced that there are a number of other tweaks that need to be made. I'd like to be as out front and vocal as we possibly can to get the people that are interested in this sort of thing aware that they've got till November 15th to comment and that we pay very close attention to those comments and look at the unintended consequences of incorporating them or not incorporating them. Did you have more technical questions? Any questions down there?
I shared a couple of comments with the staff, but for the benefit of the council. Section 1216150, I think there are, we can recognize that there are limited situations where the other design professionals that are working on a construction project could prepare a tree protection plan if there isn't work contemplated in a tree protection zone. So I suggested that. And then in section 12.16.18, with regard to landmark designations, the numbering system that gave the options for how a tree becomes landmark was a little bit, and it's probably not accurate enough. So I made those suggestions. Otherwise, great work. Thank you.
Thank you. And like I said, proofreading your own work can be dangerous, so we appreciate you pointing those out to us.
Okay. If we don't have any other questions, thank you very much, and we will see you back later in the year.
Thank you.
And with that, we will move on to city manager reports. Report.
Good evening, everyone. If you are a utility ratepayer in the city of Folsom...
Oh, I apologize. This, I did have two people that wanted to speak on it. Kevin Duel and then Justin Raffel. My apologies, Elaine.
So, thank you, Mayor Howell and council members, for the opportunity to speak on this item. I'd just like to raise that not all tree species are made alike, and I think the general plan reflects that. Natural and Cultural Resources Policy 1.1.4 encourages the use of native vegetation in new development. And along those lines, I have a couple of points for your consideration. The first would be to keep heritage trees limited to native oaks, or at least to native trees, rather than expanding them to include any trees or any trees on the city's tree master list. Actually, on that point, I, there was a little bit of, I had a little bit of confusion in the staff report. When I had read the proposed ordinance, I saw that the definition of heritage tree was going to be changed or was proposed to be changed to be a tree on the city's tree master list over 30 inches, where I believe the presentation said it would be any tree in excess of 30 inches. I'll remind the council that the existing code defines heritage tree as a native oak tree over 19 inches in diameter. It would be my recommendation to limit the definition of heritage trees to native oak trees, or if not that, to other trees native to the Sacramento Valley. The scenario where a tree that was not, you know, consistent with our cultural or our natural heritage being protected in the same way that a heritage oak would be protected, I think, could be, you know, create some silly situations.
I think if you talk to staff, there are some examples of trees that should be protected that are not oak trees.
Sure. But at least consideration into that. Certainly, you know, avoiding the situation as broad as any tree. I think there could be some narrowing down there. The other point would be on the tree master list, not something substantive, but instead just a refocusing to encourage the use of heritage trees on the tree master list. Currently, many of the trees that are native to the Sacramento Valley are included within that list, within the list. But because the list is sorted by scientific name, it doesn't provide any direction or it doesn't encourage them. Redesigning the list say to have those native trees towards the top of the list, you know, picked apart, in order to encourage it, I think, could be one way for us to continue to showcase our natural heritage. So with that, thank you.
Mayor Howell, council members, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I also share the same concerns as Commissioner Duel about the anything over 30 inches being on the list. I think in the presentation, it did show invasive species are out there, but I did not see that actually in the ordinance. So I think we do need to include that in the ordinance. I also think if, however we decide to do that, it's definitely important to have a process in place for people to go through the taking out dead or dying trees or any trees that are a public safety risk. We can have a great permit process for going after those, whatever we decide are protected trees. But we also need to have a process where the city arborist goes out and responds to anything dead or dying that's a public, that's an imminent threat.
And actually, that's, one of the ways that we handle that currently is through emergencies. If the tree is in imminent danger of going down, then the tree can be taken down, and that's kind of dealt with in a very different manner.
Sure. So there's no permit process involved with that?
It can happen after the fact if it's an emergency.
Okay. So I think that's just important to have that process really outlined and explained to residents.
to residents, because I think what I, you know, what I see right now is there's the permit process that's really defined, but that other part isn't necessarily defined. So when the rest of the resident knows how to do that, then they may not go through that process. So just, especially if we're going to all of a sudden decide that residents now have six more protected trees on their property, we need to let them know, hey, if they're dead or dying or an imminent threat, then there's a way to deal with them quickly. Definitely support encouraging the retention of existing trees overpaying the in lieu of fees. I think it's a great thing, and allowing flexibility on the individual parcels is definitely a step in the right direction, because I think preserving as many of the existing trees as possible is definitely the preferred method. And also, you know, we've definitely seen these instances where the parking lot shade trees have not been taken well care of, so I think adding those is a great step forward as part of this update. So the other thing, the reduced mitigation within the billable footprint of residential lots, I didn't see where this would apply to commercial properties. I would think that we would apply similar standards to residential and commercial properties. If we're going to say that there is a reduced mitigation for residential, probably ought to include that in anything else that's being built in the city.
I think the difference in that one, Justin, is the commercial stuff typically is going to go to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission on residential stuff, on custom stuff, you're not going to see it at all. And in subdivision stuff, you may not be looking at that much of the detail about where there are and are not trees. So I think the commercial side is basically dealt with in the fact that it goes to the Planning Commission.
And that's fine. I think I would just clarify and have that consistent in our ordinance, so it's very clear. The other things that came up for me is appeals for a tree work permit just are not allowed at all, whereas appeals for tree removal do come to the commission. I think everything should be able to be appealed. If somebody disagrees with a decision by a staff member or the city arborist, they should have that ability to come and appeal for the tree work permit. And then the last thing is, it just seemed like a little thing that was missed, maybe in the mitigation section. It talks about removal of street trees on residential properties under a half acre, but it doesn't talk about removal of street trees on anything over a half acre. I'm okay with that, but for most people, it probably just should say, you know, removal of street trees on residential properties, or we have to somehow handle those other ones that are out there, so.
I suspect that the issue on that is that there's probably very few subdivisions that were built on greater than half-acre lots, and the whole street tree thing typically comes in when you're building a subdivision.
I just say that because I'm on one of those houses right now, so it's great that I can take out my street tree, but the other folks that are on my street may be a little disappointed when I'm the only one that can take it out without a permit.
You know that you have a ridiculously large lot. That's a very unusual circumstance.
Fair enough. Just for consistency, I would request that be...
Somebody follow Justin home and make sure he's not going to cut down that tree.
I love my street tree, but I'd like everybody to keep them. So thank you for your time tonight, everyone. I appreciate it.
Thanks. And it might be helpful, both of you, because you had a lot of detailed comments, if you could email those into staff.
Absolutely. Will do.
Okay. Thanks.
Can I ask a question of Ms. Nunez? With regard to the question about tree work permits not being appealable, what's a situation where one would be denied, where an appeal would be useful at all? It seems like that's a decision by a professional arborist on whether the process is correct that's proposed, right?
That was the thought process, and also, the tree work permit is a ministerial permit. So long as someone can meet the findings that are outlined in this proposed document, they would get their permit, and oftentimes there would be conditions attached to that, whether they need to have a project arborist supervising, or there needs to be a special inspection if they have to trench three roots or that kind of thing.
Got it.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, everyone. Now, back to the city manager report.
All right. If you are a utility ratepayer in Folsom, you probably received a mailer over the weekend describing proposed utility rate increases. It looks like this. We have placed a PDF of this mailer, as well as frequently asked questions, on our website to provide helpful information and answer questions about proposed rate increases for water, wastewater, and solid waste services. Also, we will be hosting a public open house about the proposed rate increases on November 6th from 5:30 to 7:00, right next door in the community center at 52 Natoma Street. And the city council will hold a public hearing on the proposed rates at its regular meeting on December 10th at 6:30 PM. Folsom Veterans Day parade entries are due this Friday. The parade will be held rain or shine at 9:00 AM on November 11th. We will be accepting parade entries again through this Friday, so if you have any interest at all, please look for details on our website. You can trick or treat with the Folsom police. Please join our Folsom Police Department for their ninth annual open house with a Halloween twist from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM on Saturday, October 26th. Bring your little ghosts, goblins, and princesses and trick or treat as you tour the police department's building. Please, no costumes that include weapons. And speaking of police, the day after tomorrow, Thursday, our police department traffic officers will be teaming with officers from Citrus Heights for a special enforcement day out on the streets. So we'll have over 12 officers specifically dedicated to pulling over traffic violators. So on that day and always, please drive safely and follow traffic laws. The Folsom CAPS, which are Citizens Assisting Public Safety, and I saw at least one in here, but he's departed, but they're wonderful volunteers that assist our police...
Probably checking on someone's vacation request.
Probably doing something really good for our community. They assist our police and fire departments with various functions. The first step to becoming a CAPS volunteer is to complete the Citizens Academy. The Citizens Academy is a 12-week academy from January through March that provides an in-depth look into the Folsom Police and Fire Departments and other city services. If you're interested, information can be found on our website, and your application is due on November 15th. The Steve Miklos Aquatic Center is hosting a free Halloween spooktacular family fun event this Saturday from 5:30 to 9:00. The fun for all ages will include a trunk-or-treat, games, crafts, and activities, and a floating pumpkin patch. The Indian Festival of Diwali, or sometimes called Deepa Vali, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, will be celebrated with a special car parade of lights this Saturday, October 26th. I think everything's happening this Saturday. From 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM, the car parade will start at Vista Del Lago, and then will conclude at Rodeo Park, where there will be a celebration at about 8:00 PM. And I also wanted to point out that Safe and Sane fireworks, like we use during July 4th, are approved in conjunction with the festival and may be used within the city between noon on Saturday, October 26th, and 9:00 PM on Sunday, October 27th. And you can find more details about the Diwali Festival on our website. And finally, happy birthday, Chief Rodriguez.
Mr. Kozowski?
Just one brief thing. I was very fortunate to be on vacation for a couple of weeks, hence the beard, and got to travel through small parts of Europe and a bunch of time in Scotland, and it reminded me of two things with regard to local traffic. We are way ahead of the curve relative to the UK with bicycle lanes, and we, it has reinforced for me the great value of traffic circles. And driving on the left is really complicated when you first start. That's all. Thank you.
Roger?
The only thing I have is, on Thursday, there will be the Air Quality Control Board. We have the per capita meeting where they're going to be voting on whether or not to implement the per capita fee. So that's at 9:00, 700 H Street on Thursday. Thank you.
Sarah?
If you have not had the opportunity to ride in the cab of a garbage truck, you are missing out. I cannot emphasize enough...
I think you mean solid waste vehicle.
Well, I cannot emphasize enough how much I enjoyed my time yesterday with Greg from the solid waste division. Six hours literally went like that, and I was just incredibly impressed with the level of customer service that those drivers give to our residents and the cooperation between the drivers to make sure that those routes get done and nobody has overtime and save the taxpayers money. So I learned a couple of secrets. We went, Greg finished his route, and we went over to help another driver with his route, and I said, well, how do you know if, you know, that street's already been done? He said, oh, we have a little trick. The first can on that street, once you empty it, you put it back down on the sidewalk or the driveway instead of the street, and then that way you know that that street has been done. So I learned some tips. But anyway, it's just a good reminder for me...
For the next time you're driving a solid waste...
Bubble size that, or has that become a prank now?
Good reminder for me that, you know, although we are the residents representatives on the council, it's really the city's, you know, 450 employees who are interfacing with the public, you know, daily, weekly, monthly, and we just have really great ambassadors for the city of Folsom, so thank you for that.
That's it. Congratulations to the folks at the zoo for their wonderful event on Saturday night that was operated by Martell O'Neill Real Estate, breakfast for dinner. There's, I see several people that were there on Saturday night. My understanding is that they had like 800 people attended that event. So that's going to, the animals are going to have a really good Christmas. There was, I understand there was a half marathon on Sunday morning. I hope that went well. There was a couple of other events on, I don't know, there's been way too many things going on lately. STA is still moving forward with working with the professional groups about putting together project information, and I'd actually like to talk to both Dave and Mark in the relatively near future about some information related to polling on the Purple's projects in Folsom that was, I found, rather surprising. We've got a connector JPA meeting on this coming Friday. The last week and a half or so, I've been like super busy and just driving around town a lot, and it's really, really disturbing the number of people that are running red lights. It's rare that I stop at a light when somebody doesn't run it going in the other direction. The traffic this morning, when I had to go do some field testing in Eldorado Hills, the traffic on East Natoma between Folsom Light Crossing and Blue Ravine slash Green Valley, everybody was doing 60. I had people beeping at me, giving me the table for one sign because I was doing the speed limit. So please pay attention, drive carefully, and I'm really happy to hear that both Folsom and Citrus Heights will be writing all of those bad people tickets tomorrow. I can't wait to find out how many, Thursday, and tomorrow.
And tomorrow, and always.
And yet, every day. So I'm looking forward to hearing how many more tickets get written, and just pay attention to your neighbors and the people that are around you. And if you're really that fired up about getting where it is you need to be by a certain time, then leave 10 minutes earlier. So with that, we are adjourned at 8:13.